Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, March 18th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Sarah Pelk. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have Bill Number 57. Ordnance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II Fiscal Article V Special Funds Chapter 237, the City of Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund to Conform with the Home Rule Charter Article IX in order to establish the creation of the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund. Bill Number 91. Ordnance Providing Funding for the City of Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund through a .50 mil increase to the property tax rate by adding Section 263.04 City of Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund Levy at Title II Fiscal Article IV Property Taxes Chapter 263 Rural Property Tax and Exemption. Bill Number 201. Resolution Adopting the Ten Commitments of Racial Equity. Bill Number 202. Resolution Further Amending Resolution 797 of 2017 entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget as amended by Resolution 876 of 2019 in order to correct the account number for the URA's microfinance program. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. We have Bill Number 145. Ordnance Amending Ordnance 36 of 2019 Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article III Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals by repealing Chapter 639 Crocodilians and Venomous Snakes in its entirety and adding a new Chapter 639 Crocodilian Species and Red-Eared Sliders prohibiting the keeping, sale, exchange, adoption, or transfer of such animals in the City of Pittsburgh. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair. We have Bill Number 157. Resolution Amending Resolution 830 of 2018 entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multimodal connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland. Bill Number 190. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project. Bill Number 191. Resolution Granting Unto Big River Development LP Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 2305 Smallman Street, Second Ward, Seventh Council District. Human Resources Committee, Mr. Kraus is the Chair. Bill Number 194. Resolution Amending Resolution 56 of 2018 entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with the United Way of Southwestern PA for services relating to the Career Transition Project 21 in Abel by increasing the authorized amount by $120,000 and by extending the term two years. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair. We have Bill Number 198. Ordnance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code Article XI Development Standards Chapter 914 Parking, Loading, and Access in order to eliminate minimum parking requirements for single-family attached dwellings. Urban Recreation Committee, Reverend Burgess is the Chair. We have Bill Number 111. Resolution Adopting the Plan Submitted to the Electors of the City of Pittsburgh entitled Restoring Pittsburgh Parks and the Parks Plan by the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy prior to the November 5th, 2019 municipal election as the official Parks Plan of the City of Pittsburgh and the City of Pittsburgh's Parks Trust Fund. Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, Ms. Strausberger is the Chair. We have Bill Number 196. Resolution Amending Resolution 613 of 2017 authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with core business technologies for software, equipment, and services related to the installation of payment processing and cash sharing system for the Department of Finance to include an additional option year and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $390,552.17 for years 2015, 16, 17, and 20. Bill Number 197. Resolution Providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Questica Inc. for professional services. This is a contract renewal via sole source for annual subscription fees related to a budgeting and performance management system cost not to exceed $412,500 over five years. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have Bill Number 19. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street. Bill Number 141. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street. And we have Bill Number 192. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Villas at Winter Park and Haxtown Street Extension in Pittsburgh. Bill Number 193. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 106 of 2019 effective February 14th, 2019 entitled Resolution Amending Resolution Number 191 effective March 19th, 2018. Resolution Providing for the execution of a cooperation agreement with the URA of Pittsburgh for the administration of certain projects and programs and providing for the payment of the cost not to exceed $3,286,320 by including an additional economic development and housing line item for an amount not to exceed $54,000 and the total cost thereof by the same amount not to exceed $3,340,320 by including an additional economic development and housing microfinance program line item for an amount not to exceed $250,000 and the total cost thereof by the same amount not to exceed $3,590,320 affecting all council districts. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to today's Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, March 18th, 2020. Our first order of business is public comment. However, given our commitment to help prevent the spread of COVID-19, we do not actually have the public with us today. However, just so the public is aware, if they want to submit public comment to City Council on any matter regarding city business and/or legislation, they can do so by emailing With that being said, we will now go to our Standing Committee agenda. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
President Kale Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
And our Chair, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our first committee for today is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Will the Clerk please read the first bill, which is 2001, excuse me.
Bill 201. Resolution Adopting the Ten Commitments of Racial Equity.
I believe we're going to hold for three weeks. Reverend Burgess, do you want to make a motion or do you have any comment?
Well, yes, I want to consider this with the commission itself. So I wanted to keep the two together. So a motion to hold three weeks.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held for three weeks. Bill 202.
Bill 202. Resolution Further Amending Resolution 797 as amended by Resolution 876 of 2019 in order to correct the account number for the URA's microfinance program.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve a discussion.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council approved this project. It's budget season and since this is basically a technical amendment to add in the program to the URA agreement with the city to do, to be able to spend some additional microfinance money.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That takes us to invoices, which we do have for approval. May I please have a motion on the invoices?
Motion to approve.
Of course, he's going to be busy.
Second.
I heard a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. The invoices are approved. I believe we do have P-cards.
Yes.
May I please have a motion for the P-cards?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The P-cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Committee, which is chaired by Mr. O'Connor. Our first bill is a deferred bill, Bill 145.
Sorry. Bill 145. Ordnance Amending Ordnance Number 36. Amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article III by repealing Chapter 639 in its entirety and adding a new Chapter 639 prohibiting the keeping, sale, exchange, adoption, exchange, or transfer of such animals in the city.
I believe we're going to have a motion to hold for four weeks. Councilman Kraus?
Motion to hold four weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The bill is held for four weeks. That takes us to our Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Coghill. Bill 157.
Bill 157. Resolution Amending Resolution 830 authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multimodal connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland to provide for a specific payee and authorize an increase to the project cost to afford for additional design services within the scope of work not to exceed a total of $1,416,543.43, an increase of $69,896.33.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. So there actually is an amendment for this bill, which members should have received. It's actually changing the increase number from approximately $69,000 to $289,000. Councilman O'Connor has been having some trouble calling in, so I know he's not on the line at this moment, I don't believe. So I wanted to offer this amendment. Also, just want to let members know, I did speak with Councilman O'Connor about this bill last night and he is in favor of it moving forward, so in case he doesn't get on the line in time. So can I have a motion to amend the bill?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment? Sigma Phi are saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended now on the actual bill itself. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Mr. Chair, this is Deb Gross.
Councilwoman Gross?
I'm a bit, thank you, I'm a bit uncomfortable with this substantial, it's not in the scheme of things, in the scheme of a $30 million project, which I believe is the PWSA part of Stormwater work in Four Mile Run, $100,000 or so increase, $80,000 increase, I'm not sure if I've got the numbers right that you just said, isn't substantial, but I'd prefer to obtain today since it's just a preliminary vote until I can, I can't see the amendment and I can't see or hear the full explanation of kind of what stage of work this is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did I hear Councilman O'Connor log on?
Yeah, sorry, I had, there was some problem. It was disconnected. So I'm going to be supportive of this today. I talked to the Director about this yesterday. These monies go to having a connection that will take us, basically build a tunnel under Panther Hollow so that we can get to the lake and connect the park together under the railroad tracks. We are going to be working on a bill for next week that my office and I with the Director are going to introduce that has to deal with the actual permit and public process. If this connection actually does happen, there will be some requirements that will bring it back to the community as well as looking at a permit process that the Department of Mobility will have to go through. So we're going to add an extra layer to protect the residents as to what is actually going on with this project because a lot of people are still asking the general same questions from before. So I'm going to be supportive of this today. Sorry I couldn't be on earlier, I don't know what the connection was, but thank you, Councilman Lavelle and I spoke yesterday about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gross, one abstention?
Yes, thank you. And I'll just note that, thank you, Councilman O'Connor for getting there and then at the good time, I can follow up with you. Appreciate it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. The bill is approved. Bill 190.
Bill 190. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $75,000 with a local match of $75,000 to come out of the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's operating budget in the form of in-kind work. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $150,000.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Need a second?
A second.
Any conversation?
Considering that this is Holy Hill, the last date that we would have had is 10 years ago,
you know, given that this is a census here and I don't have it right in front of me.
You know, the economic, I'm just, I'm just curious. That's why I'm not, I'm going to vote for it, I'm just curious. Well, I'll look into it between now and, I guess, Tuesday, and I think all parks should be done. I'm just, I'm just curious. I think that, I'll talk more about it next week. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is approved. That takes us to the Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one new paper, Bill 194.
Bill 194. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 56, which authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multimodal connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland to provide for a specific payee and authorize an increase to the project cost to afford for additional design services within the scope of work not to exceed a total of $1,416,543.43, an increase of $69,896.33.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. So there actually is an amendment for this bill, which members should have received. It's actually changing the increase number from approximately $69,000 to $289,000. Councilman O'Connor has been having some trouble calling in, so I know he's not on the line at this moment, I don't believe. So I wanted to offer this amendment. Also, just want to let members know, I did speak with Councilman O'Connor about this bill last night and he is in favor of it moving forward, so in case he doesn't get on the line in time. So can I have a motion to amend the bill?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment? Sigma Phi are saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended now on the actual bill itself. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Mr. Chair, this is Deb Gross.
Councilwoman Gross?
I'm a bit, thank you, I'm a bit uncomfortable with this substantial, it's not in the scheme of things, in the scheme of a $30 million project, which I believe is the PWSA part of Stormwater work in Four Mile Run, $100,000 or so increase, $80,000 increase, I'm not sure if I've got the numbers right that you just said, isn't substantial, but I'd prefer to obtain today since it's just a preliminary vote until I can, I can't see the amendment and I can't see or hear the full explanation of kind of what stage of work this is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did I hear Councilman O'Connor log on?
Yeah, sorry, I had, there was some problem. It was disconnected. So I'm going to be supportive of this today. I talked to the Director about this yesterday. These monies go to having a connection that will take us, basically build a tunnel under Panther Hollow so that we can get to the lake and connect the park together under the railroad tracks. We are going to be working on a bill for next week that my office and I with the Director are going to introduce that has to deal with the actual permit and public process. If this connection actually does happen, there will be some requirements that will bring it back to the community as well as looking at a permit process that the Department of Mobility will have to go through. So we're going to add an extra layer to protect the residents as to what is actually going on with this project because a lot of people are still asking the general same questions from before. So I'm going to be supportive of this today. Sorry I couldn't be on earlier, I don't know what the connection was, but thank you, Councilman Lavelle and I spoke yesterday about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gross, one abstention?
Yes, thank you. And I'll just note that, thank you, Councilman O'Connor for getting there and then at the good time, I can follow up with you. Appreciate it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. The bill is approved. Bill 190.
Bill 190. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $75,000 with a local match of $75,000 to come out of the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's operating budget in the form of in-kind work. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $150,000.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Where is West Penn?
Where's, where's the, Reverend, you're saying where's the playground?
Is this, what is this for? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you exactly.
It's going after a grant.
This is Councilwoman Gross. Yeah. Do you want me to answer? This is Councilwoman Gross. West Penn Playground is in Polish Hill.
And what's the racial mix of that community? Probably?
Considering that this is Polish Hill, the last date that we would have had is 10 years ago, you know, given that this is a census here and I don't have it right in front of me.
You know, the economic, I'm just, I'm just curious. That's why I'm not, I'm going to vote for it, I'm just curious. Well, I'll look into it between now and, I guess, Tuesday, and I think all parks should be done. I'm just, I'm just curious. I think that, I'll talk more about it next week. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is approved. That takes us to Bill 191.
Bill 191. Resolution Granting Unto Big River Development LP Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 2305 Smallman Street, Second Ward, Seventh Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Need a second?
A second.
Any conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is approved. That takes us to the Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one new paper, Bill 194.
Bill 194. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 56, which authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania by increasing the authorized amount by $120,000 and by extending the term two years.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is approved. That takes us to the Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one new paper, Bill 194.
Bill 194. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 56, which authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multimodal connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland to provide for a specific payee and authorize an increase to the project cost to afford for additional design services within the scope of work not to exceed a total of $1,416,543.43, an increase of $69,896.33.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is held for four weeks. That takes us to our Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Coghill. Bill 157.
Bill 157. Resolution Amending Resolution 830 authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multimodal connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland to provide for a specific payee and authorize an increase to the project cost to afford for additional design services within the scope of work not to exceed a total of $1,416,543.43, an increase of $69,896.33.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The bill is held for four weeks. That takes us to our Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Coghill. Bill 157.
Bill 157. Resolution Amending Resolution 830 authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multimodal connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland to provide for a specific payee and authorize an increase to the project cost to afford for additional design services within the scope of work not to exceed a total of $1,416,543.43, an increase of $69,896.33.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Wait, 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 hold on. Where's the playground at?
Is that Reverend?
Where's this playground at?
What?
Hello?
Where is West Penn?
Where's, where's the, Reverend, you're saying where's the playground?
Is this, what is this for? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you exactly.
It's going after a grant.
This is Councilwoman Gross. Yeah. Do you want me to answer? This is Councilwoman Gross. West Penn Playground is in Polish Hill.
And what's the racial mix of that community? Probably?
Considering that this is Polish Hill, the last date that we would have had is 10 years ago, you know, given that this is a census here and I don't have it right in front of me.
You know, the economic, I'm just, I'm just curious. That's why I'm not, I'm going to vote for it, I'm just curious. Well, I'll look into it between now and, I guess, Tuesday, and I think all parks should be done. I'm just, I'm just curious. I think that, I'll talk more about it next week. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gross, one abstention?
Yes, thank you. And I'll just note that, thank you, Councilman O'Connor, for getting there in a good time. I can follow up with you. Appreciate it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. The bill is approved. Bill 190.
Bill 190, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the West Penn Playground Reconstruction Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $75,000 with a local match of $75,000 to come out of the 2020 City of Pittsburgh's operating budget in the form of in-kind work. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $150,000.
May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Wait, 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 hold on. Where's the playground at?
Is that Reverend?
Where's the playground at? Where's this playground at?
What?
Hello?
Where is West Penn?
Where's, where's the playground? Reverend, you're saying where's the playground?
Is this, what is this for?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you exactly.
It's going after a grant.
This is Councilwoman Gross. Yeah. Do you want me to answer? This is Councilwoman Gross. West Penn Playground is in Polish Hill.
And what's the racial mix of that community? Probably?
Considering that this is Polish Hill, the last date that we would have had is 10 years ago, you know, given that this is a census year, and I don't have it right in front of me.
We know the economic, I'm just, I'm just curious. That's why I'm not, I'm going to vote for it. I'm just curious. Well, I'll look into it between now and, I guess, Tuesday. And I think all parks should be done. I'm just, I'm just curious. I think that, I'll talk more about it next week. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is approved. That takes us to Bill 191.
Bill 191, Resolution Granting Unto Big River Development LP Their Successors and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a New Projecting Sign at 2305 Smallman Street, 2nd Ward, 7th Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
A second.
Any conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is approved. That takes us to the Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one new paper, Bill 194.
Bill 194, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 56, which authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania by increasing the authorized amount by $120,000 and by extending the term two years.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Second. Okay, thank you.
Any, any conversation? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is approved. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one deferred paper, Bill 2418.
Bill 2418, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article One, Section 90203, zoning map by changing from LNC, Local Neighborhood Commercial, to P, Parks, property with furniture on East Carson Street, South 12th Street, and Roland Way identified as Block 3H Lot 15 in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System 17th Ward.
Need a motion to hold for a cable cast public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill will be held for a public hearing. That takes us to a new paper, Bill 198.
Bill 198, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article Six, Development Standards, Chapter 914, Parking, Loading, and Access in Order to Eliminate Minimum Parking Requirements for Single Family Attached Dwellings.
We need a motion to send to the-
Motion to send.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so moved.
So the motion, just for clarity, is to send to Planning Commission for Report and Recommendation as well as for a public hearing. We need a second?
Thank you. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be sent to the Planning Commission. That takes us to Innovation and Performance, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strausberger. New paper, Bill 196.
Bill 196, Resolution Amending Resolution 613, which authorized the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Core Business Technologies for software, equipment, and services related to the installation of payment processing and cash sharing system for the Department of Finance to include an additional option year and providing for the payment of cost thereof not to exceed $390,552.17 for years 2015, 16, 17, and 2020.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 197.
Bill 197, Resolution Providing that the City Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Qudisca, Qudisca, sorry, Qudisca Inc. for Professional Services. This is a contract renewal deal sole source for annual subscription fees related to a budgeting and performance management system, cost not to exceed $412,500 over five years.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is approved. That takes us to Inner Governmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have a couple deferred papers, Bill 19.
Bill 19, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you'll notice that there are two papers here that have been held a couple of weeks. I have talked to the developers on this one, 1465 Smallman. They're actually under construction. So all of the planning permits have been issued. The online portal shows that there's still some finalization of one of the zoning permits, but given that they're under construction, I feel that council can be comfortable moving forward on this, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 141.
Bill 141, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street.
Need a motion?
Motion, motion to approve a discussion.
Second. Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. As I just pointed out, this one still has several planning permits that have not been issued and are in revision, so I'm going to recommend holding this one for another two weeks. Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is held two weeks. That takes us to-
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would you permit an interrogatory between myself and Councilwoman Gross?
Yes.
Councilwoman, this next Bill 192, it's really been part of a very hotly debated development in the Southside Bronx. And if I may ask, use the motion for a full review while we get a handle on what the community's desire is here. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now read Bill 192.
Bill 192, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Villas at Winter Park at Haxtown Street Extended.
Motion to hold for-
Four weeks.
Need a second?
Thank you.
Councilman, second?
Yes, second. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for four weeks. That takes us to our last and final bill, Bill 193.
Bill 193, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 106, which provided for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA for the administration of certain projects and program by including an additional economic development and housing microfinance program line item for an amount not to exceed $250,000 and the total cost thereof by the same amount not to exceed $3,590,320, council districts all.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. This is in part the companion piece to the bill at the beginning of the agenda to increase funding for microfinance, which is very timely at this time. You'll see that there's also $54,000 additional funding for the HELP initiative, which I believe is Councilman Burgess's district.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill 193 is approved. That'll take us to our meeting announcements. To help prevent the spread of COVID-19, city council meetings are limited to members and clerk staff. We will meet next Tuesday, March 24th, at 10:00 a.m. for the regular meeting with the standing committee meeting to immediately follow. However, we will still need to reach directors and point of contact for legislation discussion for the standing committee's meeting next Tuesday. If your legislative item is on the agenda next week, please send your best contact phone number to the clerk's office via cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. I would also recommend to remind the public that if they want to submit comment, they can also submit comment to cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Is there any discussion from members?
Yeah.
Reverend Burgess?
Yes. So I don't, I'm not good on this word at least today, but I want to just make a point that when we look at that park, whether it should or should not receive investment, this is the normal way we do it. And we can't see it in context to any other park, right? This could have been the best investment and the most equitable investment. It could have been the worst investment, but we have no way of viewing that, right? That's why it's real important that we need to have some baseline plan so that when we agree to put money into any of our parks, it's done in a consistent, fair manner. Because without that, we have no way of evaluating. That's it.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you, Councilman Lavelle, for chairing the meeting. You did a great job.
Thank you. Any other-
And Council President Smith, can you look out for a phone call for me right after the meeting? Couple things I want to talk to you about, okay? Thanks.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Councilman, Councilman Lavelle, this is Councilwoman Gross. I had a phone call earlier this morning with the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania, and they are increasing capacity at their 211 HELP service. Most of us are familiar with 211 and use it in our constituent services. It's an excellent resource when people are looking to meet basic needs, you know, looking to have access to food, worried about their utilities being shut off. And they are adapting and expanding capacity right now, and so it's helpful to refer constituents and even people looking out for emergency and non-emergency needs. They're coordinating with Allegheny County to make sure that it's a great first place to reach out for every kind of service at this time. You can call, but you can also text. And the way you text is by putting in your zip code, area code, excuse me, area code, 412, and the number is 898211. And they'll do things like text to your phone the form that you need to apply for unemployment benefits, for example. They're also increasing their online capacity, and they want to emphasize that they're also taking collections. A lot of people are looking to give money so that other people can receive cash assistance. And United Way has been doing this for decades. So they're trained and they have a lot of capacity, and they serve statewide. They can also target to your neighborhood. So I'll be sharing that information, and I just wanted to take this opportunity. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion from members? If not, I need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, so, sorry, Mr. Chair. Can we motion to excuse the absent member?
I apologize. Who was absent?
No one. Coghill.
Um.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think he ever got through.
Okay. So motion-
He was trying also.
So it may have been Councilman Coghill. I thought he, I thought he got one. So motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.